Meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Winnicott County Community School District Board of Education. It is April 21st, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We are in the high school large group lecture hall. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and door in the vestibules of district school buildings. This is a meeting of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There may be time for public comment as indicated in the agenda. The meeting will also be available to watch live at www.youtube.com/winnicottani. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A roll call, please.
Stelzner.
Here.
Veritch.
Here.
Keller. Peterson.
Ackman.
Here.
Condi, here, Hanson.
Here. Recognizing our administrative team, we have Dr. Larson, Mrs. Horvath, Mr. Manier, Mrs. Knapp, Dr. Mashad, Mr. Katie, Mrs. Dodd, Mr. Dobner, Mr. Jerabek. I believe that's it. Visitors, if you have not signed up on the white sign-up sheet by the door, please do so before you leave. And now is the time for open forum. And again, we'll just remind people that you may not speak about people personally, students' names, staff positions. So if you do, I will stop you. Okay, Mrs. Miriam Barna.
Miriam Barna, the only two times I've come here to speak recently, my freedom of speech was denied. The first time, I was told by two board members I could not speak as my speech had nothing to do with that night's agenda, when all other speakers that night spoke on whatever subject they wanted. The second time, my microphone was muted on purpose. As I watched the board member at the end, when she noticed I was here to speak, she got up, went to the back of the room, muted the opening of the meeting, called me first, even though my name was second on the list that night. I was called out of order, and like magic, the sound was restored immediately after my speech. And now tonight, the school board will be voting on my right and your right to speak moving forward. If it passes, we will have to be, we will have to submit our speech seven days ahead of a board meeting, and our speech topic must be approved by, you guessed it, the lady on the end. This is illegal. This is stripping our freedom of speech. Some of our board members don't want you to know what is truly happening in our schools, like the severe neglect of my fourth grade special ed son and his friends that they received this school year under their special ed team. My son wandered off from the safety of his classroom earlier this school year. His classmate escaped the school premises and made it to the edge of the Wolf River just a few weeks ago, and had another incident just last week. Because of the severe neglect of this Winnicott County special ed staff and the incompetence of it, my son's buddy is now leaving Winnicott County and is starting a new, safe and competent school next week with staff who actually understand autism and will follow his IEP, unlike my son's staff who refused to follow my son's IEP this year. My son and his classmates lost so much under these special ed staff. Steps are being taken now to right the wrongs, but again, my son lost this entire school year. The two special ed pares who stood up for my boy and his friends were fired for pointing out the wrongs, but it was written as they resigned or as they quit, and that's not the truth. And one of them even being yelled at the entire time while she was in the meeting with a lady here at the end, who sits at the end. And that's exactly what she is doing now by trying to pass this thing tonight. She doesn't want any of us parents or concerned community members to get a word in edgewise. To the corrupt board members here tonight, you know who you are. It's obvious to me you had no conscience. To the rest of the school board members tonight who want to do right by our kids, you will vote against this corruption tonight. If you choose to silence me, you're choosing to silence my fourth grade, non-verbal autistic son.
Thank you. Katie Calwartz?
Pardon me, I'm a little under the weather. My voice is in and out. Katie Calwartz, I live in the village of Winnicott County. This is probably my last time speaking from this side of the table for a while. With that being said, could I direct your attention to policy 0167.3, public comment at board meetings on tonight's agenda? I know this policy has been worked on quite a bit recently. I have looked at it a number of times myself, and there's just one thing that just doesn't seem to sit right with, with me, and I'm asking the board to please amend tonight or send back to committee the procedure for getting items on the agenda. Ask the board this: As elected officials, don't you think that we should each have the ability to put items on the agenda so that we can best represent our constituents? Can we amend the process so that each of you/us have the decision-making power individually to determine agenda items? This also ensures power is equally divided. I would like to leave you with a quote from our policy manual, Philosophy of the Board. The Board has the dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and meeting the desires of residents. While the Board has an obligation to determine and assess citizen desires, it is understood that when the voters elect delegates to represent them in the conduct of specified educational programs, they at the same time are endowed with the authority to exercise their best judgment in determining policies, making decisions, and approving procedures for carrying out the responsibility. In order to adhere to this philosophy, each individual Board of Ed member should have the autonomy to put items of interest or concern on the agenda without question. I understand that this may need some extra workup, you know, limitations, maybe it's, maybe you get one item per month, you know, because you don't want one person saying, hey, I want 12 items on tonight's agenda. But I think it's food for thought. It's not meant to be negative. I think it could better the Board and better the district. Thank you.
Anna Mearns?
Good evening. I also just wanted to speak on the open forum policy that's on the agenda tonight and read from the public comment at board meetings, 0167.3. And it says, "The Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters." So I too would also like to ask for that to be amended to allow for all board members. And like she said, even if you just want to put it once a month, that they have an option to, once a month, put a, an agenda item. Also from the public, I believe you have said before, Peggy, that you really don't get many requests from the public, so it's not really an issue as being too many requests for the board, for the agenda. So I just feel we shouldn't be denying the public if they want to speak about something, especially since it doesn't happen often. I also want to bring up, a little bit surprised this hasn't been on the agenda at all, but I know by April 24th, the United States Department of Education is requiring all school districts to submit a signed certification affirming compliance with federal anti-discrimination laws under Executive Order 14190. This certificate must be submitted by the Department of Public Instruction, which is expected to compile and forward these documents to the Department of Education. Now, I understand our director, our DPI superintendent, is not complying with this, but also public, or each school could themselves sign something and send it to the DOE so we don't risk losing federal funding as of April 24th, which as I recall, that was the big concern with Title IX in August, to comply with that so we didn't lose federal funding. And I just, I'm just surprised I haven't seen this on the agenda. So I guess I would ask, maybe Peggy, you can send me an email to see if you have actually talked to the lawyers about this or anything, so. All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move into the open session, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Condi, second by Stelzner, to approve consent agenda items A through H. Any questions or discussion from board members? Roll call, please.
Stelzner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, aye, Hanson.
Aye. Approve April 7th, 2025 regular school board meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hanson, second by Veritch, to approve the April 7th, 2025 regular school board meeting minutes. Roll call, please.
Veritch.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, aye, Stelzner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Cost to continue.
Yes, in your packet, you see a document labeled Winnicott County Community School District, projections of cost to continue. We learned from our legislators that, I'll say, they wanted our, we talk about our budget and our budget deficit, they wanted to hear about it in a different format. They wanted to know how many dollars extra over the $325 does it cost to continue without having cuts? So this document was shared with our legislators, let's see, two Fridays ago, and you can see that in our budget, the cost to continue, either $17082 or $29440. So they wanted to understand what it would take to continue operations with no cuts. And then at the bottom of the document, it talks about the reasons for these increase. Increases a lot of its health insurance, increase in pupil transportation, like you can see on this document, it's property tax increase, reduction of overall costs. So you can see why the need is there. So I wanted to share with you, as I shared with our legislators.
I just wanted to comment on this approach, and I think it's a good approach as we talk with our elected officials on understanding the fact, history tells us we come in indicating a deficit. If we can actually speak the language that they understand as far as school district funding and monies and so on, it gives them a lot clearer avenue to understand the cost of individual school district students, the cost per student. So I appreciate the approach. Actually, it's again, giving them more tools to understand the operation of a school district. So on the fact here of cost to continue, when I did speak with Peggy, I had mentioned to her, I think it's a good idea to put it on the agenda, and for each of us to really understand that approach so that we can do budgeting as we go through to get ready for our budgeting process, determined upon, of course, the amount of monies that we're going to get if we do an increase of per student per year.
Peggy, how was this received? What was the reaction in the meeting you had?
Well, unfortunately, our representatives weren't there. Our general rep, based on where you live, representative, or Senator Rachel and Representative Nate Gussis, and we're not there. But other members of the team were kind of surprised that we changed this language. It was new to them too, but overall, we just heard from other legislators, they wanted this. So it was well-received. I think they understand, I just, their job is hard, right? Everybody's coming at them from every single angle, saying, we need this, we need this. So I think they appreciate hearing that as well, because we understand that, but we just wanted to show them why so many school districts are going to operational referendum. So that was the main point, and they understood.
So is there a rough date that we have to know where this money is going to come from, as far as, you know, if you want to say, staff reductions or whatever?
Well, in '25, '26, we have an annual meeting in October. I apologize for not having the date right off the top of my head, but generally speaking, I'm going to say it's like 18th, 17th, and it right in there, and that's where we finalize our budget. And hopefully, we know the state budget at that time. Our budget actually begins July 1, and we generally don't know what the state is providing for schools and their budget until October. Yes, I know odd, but that is factual.
And I, and I think, you know, our business manager actually is already starting to build our budget, looking at history of previous years and as well our current expenses, to have a general idea, a figure in mind from, from what we've been getting historically from year to year. We just never know always for sure what's going to be approved as it's approved.
Well, and based on the recent Supreme Court ruling, we do know we'll get the $325 per student increase. It's just a matter of anything additional, and that's what that cost to continue includes, is the $325, and what additionally do we need to continue without making cuts?
So in other words, what you're saying, Peggy, is the numbers that we were given tonight are over and above that inclusion of the $325?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because we know that's, based on the Supreme Court ruling, was that last week, that we will get those dollars.
Yeah, and I want to compliment the administration just on, I mean, I don't feel like this is a big ask, honestly. I'm sure there are districts that are asking for a lot more, but I do feel like the administration has a good handle on exactly what the needs are for our, for our cost to continue. It's not a lot of, you know, it's not padded, it's not glitz and glamour, it's really what we need to continue to run the district in a, in a fiscal, responsibly fiscal way, so. Anything else from the board members? Okay. The '25, '26 middle school handbook for your review. Changes to the handbook were highlighted in yellow, so you can take a look at what was, what the proposed changes were. You can see the master schedule reflects the collaborative time now as well. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, please, I have input. Everything looked great, except for there's three areas. It all involves the word gender identity.
Dean, can you tell us exactly what page you're talking about?
Yes, we're starting out on B5, eight, no, that's B5.
On eight what?
Eight-five, probably. Eight-five?
That's eight.
Where it talks about Title IX?
Yep, yeah, eight-five, so second paragraph at the top. That's the first one. And the reason why I'm bringing up these three instances is it's such a hot topic, and I'm trying to save us any problems in the future, you know, as far as legal fees. It just opens up a can of worms, and plus, it doesn't conform to state and federal statute right now. Gender identity is in neither state or federal bills. So that's the first instance.
Where are you seeing gender identity, Dean?
The start of the second paragraph, pupil nondiscrimination harassment. So that's the first one. And then we move on to page 815, fourth paragraph down at the top for harassment. We also have gender identity. And then the last one, we move down to page...
Dean, slow down. What, what paragraph in 815?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the second paragraph at the top. Nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Sexual orientation is fine, it's just the gender identity. It's not in state or federal statute. And the last one is page... Okay, I said 910, 815, and that first one, you got, yeah, eight-five. Okay, I'm sorry. So eight-five, 815, and page 910.
Oh, that's the high school.
Yes.
Okay.
And then again, this isn't to benefit me, it's to benefit the whole district, just to try to save more turmoil, more problems, plus to conform with state and federal law.
I think it's important to recognize that we still do have a state Supreme Court ruling that we cannot discriminate against gender identity. However, that being said, we can take it out. It doesn't matter because it's still protected. If that makes the board feel better, I mean, it's not, like, we are going to discriminate somebody who identifies different than their gender at birth, because we can't, and I would highly suggest we don't. But if the board wishes to take it out for semantics, we certainly can, but it's still a part of a Wisconsin Supreme Court ruling that's still in place.
It's a district court, it's a federal district court.
Sorry, thank you. I should have asked Jill, the lawyer.
I, I, I agree with what Peggy's saying, however, given the executive order from earlier this year, I do feel the gender identity language should be removed.
I agree. Jackie, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
So a motion with the proposed change?
I move to approve the middle school handbook, however, all reference to gender identity needs to be removed.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Veritch, second by Condi, to approve the '25, '26 middle school handbook with the changes as proposed regarding gender identity. Roll call, please.
Ackman.
Here.
Condi, aye, Stelzner. Veritch.
Aye.
Hanson.
And the '25, '26 high school handbook, again, a few changes that were highlighted.
I move to approve the '25, '26 high school handbook, removing the gender identity language.
Motion by Veritch, second by Hanson, to approve the '25, '26 high school handbook, removing the term gender identity. Any other questions or comments from the board members? Okay, roll call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Condi, aye, Stelzner.
Aye.
Veritch.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. And the '25, '26 teacher contracts.
Yes, we're asking for a motion to approve our teacher contracts. We do have to offer them contracts by May 15th, so we just wanted to stay ahead of the game here. And people who are retiring or have put in the resignation are not on the list, so.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have some input, please.
Sure.
Could you make sure you have the sheet cut out?
Right, right. As far as the list, now, let's say hypothetically, we have to eliminate a few staff positions. What happens now with us approving this list? What happens if somebody is, is deleted here? What do we do?
It'll go through a process where we're doing like a layoff, or they don't call it that for teachers anymore, but it would go through that process.
Okay, yeah, because I counted 129 names on there, so that's why I want... Is that everybody for staff?
It's everybody for staff, but people who are retiring or resigning are not on that list.
Okay.
It's teachers.
It's professional staff.
Yeah.
Right. Yep, yeah, not support staff.
Yeah. Okay.
So we need a motion to...
Yeah, motion, please.
I'd like to motion to approve the 2024, 2025 professional staff notice of renewal.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
The 25, 26, yes, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Condi, second by Ackman, to approve the 25, 26 teacher contracts. Roll call, please. call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Klindi Eisstelsner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Peterson, Callan, Hanson.
Aye. Uh, library staff update.
Yes, um, unfortunately, we lost our middle school full-time librarian aide. Um, she took on a different position in, um, a community as a librarian. Um, that being said, as we've explained, every time there's a resignation, retirement, we analyze the whole picture. What can we do here? And Dana did her due diligence and just really looked at their entire library program. And as you know, we hired an additional tech person this year that is really, um, helped, stepped up and helped with some of, I'll say, the Chromebook situations. Um, and as well as we, um, we'll be looking at replacing one of our elementary coaches who could take on a little bit of the bookroom responsibilities. So that being said, Dana's proposing that we no longer need to do the elementary library full-time position. However, we're going to ask, and we always were going to ask that, um, the middle school full-time position come back. So the person who's leaving us rehire. And then if you recall, um, our halftime position, we didn't replace this school year just because the middle school library is in such flux. It's essentially up here right now, but then we'd ask to replace that halftime position, which we knew we were going to ask of you, or we told you we were going to ask, come back and replace that this coming school year. So again, it'll basically run status quo. So I appreciate Dana's efforts to relook at the position. Again, we try to do that once somebody resigns or retires to make sure we're staffing appropriately.
Okay, questions? Policies.
Look, we have a list of policies tonight for approval and these policies had been gone over, uh, by the policy committee and brought to the board for recommendation of approval. Policy 5330, the administration of medication, emergency care. This policy, um, we are going to put on hold. Um, we've had some questions that we're looking into, um, not only from our school nurse, but as well our, our policy directive. So I'm asking that that policy will be put on hold and we will come back with that policy, um, at a later date when we get the questions that are out there to be answered so that we can move forward. Policy 7510, Winnikonye Community Arts Center, community facility use. Twelve dash six. Any questions on that? Twelve dash seven. Twelve dash eight. Twelve dash nine. Twelve dash 10. Twelve dash 11. Twelve dash 12.
One question.
Yes.
On the, the fees for that, um, I noticed that, um, the fee for the technical director and house manager, um, are, that's a salary position?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then it would be beyond the forty, it would be then the twenty dollars an hour. Okay.
So if somebody rents our theater for the summer, or a summer program, they pay an additional fee that goes into, um, the WCAC fund.
Okay.
Um, I'm just looking at this equipment and that, that they can rent or some, uh, organizations can rent. Are they signing some type of contract where they're liable if they damage or negligent and?
Yeah, so there's a deposit, um, $2,000 deposit and then $2,000, uh, we call it a, rental fee. But we don't actually allow some of the equipment to come out. There's some certain pieces of our equipment that we just don't allow people to use. Unfortunately, um, we've just, the reason why this is coming about is to limit some of that, um, and limit some of the spaces, like our band and choir room. So lots of groups just use those spaces as a rehearsal area. Um, and we're just going to limit them a little bit because, but that's why it came about. So good question.
Okay. Any further question? And I'm glad you brought that up Peggy, as far as the language within this policy, as far as the use of the band room and equipment, the extension, the extended areas other than what the contract states for usage. All ready?
So are we, are we going to comment at all on 167 dot three bylaw?
Uh, we're not to that.
Oh, we're not to that policy yet.
Okay.
Policy 12 on 1214, um, policy 7510 dash zero four. Uh, we just went over, no further questions on that policy. We're going to move on to policy 7540 dash zero three, student technology acceptable use and safety, 1214. Any questions on 1214? 1215. 1216. As you see down towards the very bottom part of that policy where it starts to say drafting note, if the district participates in the Federal Universal Service E-Rate Program for schools, the Federal Communication Commission requires the following language to be included in your acceptable use policy. As you see there, there's two checkmarks, um, that we will have. And in the very first sentence underneath there, a checkmark, off-premises use of E-Rate supported technology must be primarily for an educational purpose that is integral, immediate, and approximate to the education of students. And the very next paragraph, there is an area where there is a potential of a checkmark further into the paragraph. We are not recommending, uh, a checkmark there. As I read this, students will be, we're going to be checkmarking right by students will be, assigned a school email account that they are required to utilize for all school-related electronic communications, including those to staff members, peers, and individuals and/or organizations outside the district with whom they are communicating for school-related projects and assignments. Period. As we start the next part of the paragraph, uh, there's a potential area for a checkmark further as directed. The rest of that language, we are not checkmarking that part of the paragraph for the additional language on 1216. Any further question on 1216? 1217, as well, as you see, uh, going down through the third sentence where we have a checkmark, students may only use district technology resources to access or use social media if it is done for educational purposes in accordance with their teacher's approval plan for such use. We are checkmarking that. Any further questions on 1217 of the policy? 1218, which is policy, staff technology, this is the staff technology acceptable use and safety on 1218. As you see the second paragraph, we're indicating the board regulates the use of district technology and information resources by principles consistent with applicable local, state, and federal laws and the district's educational mission. This policy and its related administrative guidelines, we do have a checkmark there when we're starting to say checkmark, policy 7544, use of social media. We do not have a checkmark by the administrative guidelines of 7544. And I believe that is, Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong, is because it currently, we do not have administrative guidelines. Use of social media and applicable employment contracts governs the staff's use of district commuters, computers, laptops, tablets, personal communication devices as defined in policy 7540 dash zero two. Anything further on 1218? 1219. 1219, as you see, uh, we go down through the, the page about halfway, just a little bit more, the district administrator or the district technology director may temporarily or permanently unblock access to websites or online educational services. And as we further down through that paragraph, again, a checkmark by the district administrator or the director of technology may disable the technology protection measures to enable access for bona fide research or other lawful purposes for staff or students age seventeen or older. Just about to the end of 1219, you'll see that there's a checkmark that we will have. Monitoring may include, but is not necessarily limited to, visual observation of online activities during class sessions or use of specific monitoring tools to review browser history and network server and computer logs. Anything further on 1219? 1220. 1220, as you'll see, the very first paragraph. As we go three quarters or so, maybe just a little over halfway down, there are two areas that we will not be having a checkmark in. Um, but as we read on, handbook receipts and acceptable process during the network log process, login process, we will have a checkmark there right by during the network login process pursuant to policy 7540 dash zero six, district issued staff email accounts, staff and board members using the district's email system shall acknowledge their review of and intend to comply with the district's policy on acceptable use of district issued email accounts. Furthering our way down through this policy under drafting note, you will see a checkmark in the area of off-premises use of E-rated support technology must be primarily for an educational purpose that is integral, immediate, and proximate to the education of students. That will have a check in and that is new language. As we further our way through, staff will be assigned a school email address that they are required to utilize for all school-related electronic communications, including those to students, parents, and other constituents, fellow staff members, and vendors, or individuals seeking to do business with the district. The next paragraph as well, we will have a checkmark with prior approval from the district administrator, a checkmark or director of technology. Staff may direct students who have been issued school assigned email accounts to use those accounts when signing up, registering for access to various online educational services, including mobile applications, apps that will be utilized by the student for educational purposes under the teacher's supervision. And in the very next paragraph, we also have a checkmark in the very last sentence, uh, accompanying guidelines and policy 7544. As we go further under draft note, we will have a checkmark by staff members may only use district technology resources to access or use social media if it's done for educational or business-related purposes. As the next paragraph sentence, we also have a checkmark, staff members' use of district technology resources to access or use social media is to be consistent with policy 7544 and its accompanying guideline. Furthering our way down through the policy under the very next paragraph, just after drafting note, we will have a checkmark in the area that states, an employee's personal or private use of social media may have unintended consequences. While the board respects its employees' First Amendment rights, those rights do not include permission to post inflammatory comments that could compromise the district's mission, undermine staff relationships, or cause a substantial disruption to the school environment. This warning includes staff members' online conduct that occurs off-school property, including from the employee's personal computer. Postings to social media shall be done in a manner sensitive to the staff members' professional responsibilities. Any further questions on 12 dash 20 of the policy? And 12 dash 21, board designates the district administrator and director of technology as the administrator's responsible for initiating, implementing, and enforcing this policy and its accompanying guidelines as the apply to staff members' use of district technology and information resources. Any further questions on 1221 or 1222? All ready? Policy number 7540 dash zero seven, district issued student email account. 12 dash 23, as we go down through the very first part of the paragraph where it states, personal email accounts on providers other than district's email system. We do have a checkmark where it states may be blocked at any time. Further down through the next paragraph of the new language, we have a checkmark in, students are prohibited from using any district issued email address or password for the district issued email account for personal accounts and third-party services. As an example, Facebook, Instagram, Pine Tree, YouTube, et cetera. We do have a checkmark, if I'm not mistaken, by Instagram?
Yes.
No, no, that's X.
What was Twitter?
Twitter.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't read it that way. Twitter, okay, there we go. And so they're all included and we do not have a checkmark then at the very end where it states without authorization from the principal. Any questions on that new language? As we read through the policy, students shall not send or forward mass emails even if educationally related without prior approval of their classroom teacher or the site administrator. And the site administrator would be the principal of each of the campus buildings. Furthering our way down through the last paragraph of 1223 on this policy, students may join list, serves, or other email services that pertain to academic work, provided the emails received, the list serves, or other email services do not. And we have a checkmark by becomes excessive. We do not have a checkmark in where it states exceed the student's individual email storage allotment. And as we, we read further in, if a student is unsure whether they have adequate storage or should subscribe to a list, serves, or RSS feed, the student should discuss the issue with the classroom teacher, the building principal, or the district's technology director and/or the IT staff, which we have a checkmark in both the district technology director and the IT staff, um, as well as we go further down, the site administrator, which I indicated later, excuse me, earlier, in each of the building campuses, the principal in the building is the site administrator. Any further questions on 1223? 1224 on the very first, uh, part of that policy where it starts out as, is authorized to block email from list servers or email services if the email received by the student. Um, and we do have a checkmark where it indicates and states becomes excessive. We do not have any further checkmarks in that first sentence. So we go down to the very last sentence within this policy paragraph. Furthermore, students using the district's email system shall satisfactorily complete training. We do have a checkmark pursuant to policy 7540 dash oh three, student technology acceptable use and safety regarding the proper use of emails. And no check there in the annually. Any further questions on 1224? 1225 is the start of, uh, policy 167 dash three, public comment at board meetings. In the very first, uh, paragraph, uh, under agenda item, I got one thing that, um, I want to read and mention. Any person or group who would like to have an item put on the agenda self shall submit their written, this includes email requests to the district administrator and board president, nor, nor later than seven business days prior to the meeting and include both A, B, and C, name, address, or the participant, group affiliation, if and when appropriate, topic to be addressed. And the other new language on this policy is, is letter B. Anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may comment during the public portion of a meeting. If requesting a future agenda item, please refer to the process above. The process above is just what I had mentioned in agenda item within the language of this policy.
Mark, it, as I read this, the intent here isn't, I mean, someone can still come. Mark, as I read this, the intent here isn't, I mean, someone can still come to open forum and request a future agenda item, they just have to take that additional step of the seven days prior to any meeting, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely, and this does not in any way eliminate the chance of anybody bringing an item forward to the agenda, a board member or not, as long as the process is used for the purpose of seven business days prior to the meeting, and include. And for myself goes, I'm all open to agenda items being brought to the board president and a district administrator, but when we get our board packets, you know, in a period of time that we do, if there are agenda items that come forward to each of the individuals stated, I certainly want enough time as a board member to feel comfortable on doing my studying and finding information and so on, for the agenda item that may be coming in front of the board as well as the public. So this policy is at no means limiting anyone from bringing an item forward to the meeting for the board to be voted on and/or for public comment, as long as it's following the process as stated.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mark. We need time to prepare. I just, my concern is, I really think we should build a rebuttal system into this. I wanted to make a motion to add a couple sentences. Because of the one sentence, such requests shall be subject to the recommendation of the district administrator and the board president, which I agree with, but the problem is, I think to keep it fair, and so tempers won't rise, and it'd be easier on us frankly, too, if we could add a couple sentences where a person, if their item did not get on the docket, they could still, what I wrote was, if a request for an item agenda is rejected, a board vote would be taken to add or delete the request for future agenda. And at least that person would have a second chance.
When you say person, are you talking about a board member?
No, no, basically, member of the, of the, you know, the community. So, and I understand that it doesn't happen often, but I'm thinking during contentious issues, very big important issues, you know, that might be used.
You're not allowed to comment right now. Thank you.
So, I just feel it would make our job easier, make things fair for the public, if we could just add that, that sentence. And I don't think it would add much to our workload as far as making the meetings longer. You know, it's just, it would give everybody a good feeling, at least, at least they have a chance. If something doesn't make it under the docket, they have one more chance with our vote.
I don't think I'm missing your intent at all, Dean, but give me an idea, as an example, of how as a board member-
Excuse me, you're not allowed to speak during this part of the meeting?
You just heard our opinion, that's all.
You didn't let me speak the first two times I came either, so remember that.
Okay, Dean, I'm just, for clarification, I wanna understand, I get the point, but I'm trying to figure out as an example, if there are items, tell me the process then that it would be given to the board members to determine if it would be an agenda item or not. If they followed the process-
Right.
-of it getting onto the agenda, let me know then if there's items that you're suggesting the process. Can you give me an idea how the rest of us would, would get that information?
Not all ideas, or, or items to be brought forward would have to do with a child. What I'm saying is even maybe somebody had a pet project they wanted to, the school to start, you know, like we just approved that dance team earlier in the month. And let's say it didn't make it on the docket, you know, or at least there's a way to at least have a second chance with our vote. So it's not just, all the pressure isn't just on you and Peggy, as, you're the president and Peggy the administrator, it gets spread out over the whole board.
So, as I would envision, and correct me if, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, you're almost looking like there's an appeal process, that if someone's told your, your agenda item's been denied by board president and/or district administrator-
Yeah.
-they can appeal it, it gets on, it would get on as a, do we want to bring this forward? No discussion about the topic, but do we wanna bring it forward to a future agenda? The board votes simply on whether or not that should be on an agenda, and then it gets on a future agenda?
Correct, kinda like a court of law with an appeal.
But we're not, that appeal wouldn't be a, a information session on the topic, it would just be whether or not it gets on the agenda?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that as well, I'm just wondering, do I need to send this back to get proper language, so that it is approved under the statute?
I will give it a good stab-
That's what I'm thinking.
And then I'll send it out to policy.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And so then we can approve it hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
If you're okay with that, I'm-
I'm fine with that.
Will council, what's their reference? Are they gonna take my sentence, or are they gonna make up a-
I'm not gonna contact legal counsel, I think we can, I think we can figure it out. I don't think it's that, I don't think it's that complex, I just wanna make sure it reads the way you are suggesting. And I just need a point of clarification. So, Mrs. Verich asked if somebody verbally can ask for an agenda item to be put on the agenda at an open forum, is that what you asked, Mrs. Verich?
No, well, they're not precluded from that, right?
In addition, they have to email.
Right, so, so just addressing Mrs. Barna's concern of her freedom of speech, we're not requiring that, that speech gets submitted to you seven days before.
Absolutely not, no.
It's just an addition, it's a step to get it on the agenda. Certainly welcome to come and speak in open form if it's a future agenda item, but you have to follow that process. That's, that's all. I just wanted the clarification there, because I think there might have been some confusion.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have a problem with taking this back, just to get the language written so that it can be within the legal statute. And as far as the request, the process, we'll take this back to committee as well as council and come back with language that is acceptable to the board. Okay, other than that, the policies that I presented, any further questions? Otherwise, I ask for them to be approved in one motion.
I move to approve policy number seventy-five-ten-four, seventy-five-forty-three, seventy-five-forty-four, seventy-five-forty-seven, and table fifty-three-thirty, and one sixty-seven-dash-three.
Second.
Motion by Verich, second by Stelzner, to approve policy seventy-five-ten-point-oh-four, seventy-five-forty-point-oh-three, seventy-five-forty-point-oh-four, and seventy-five-forty-point-oh-seven. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Kundy, I, Stelzner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye.
Administrative reports, those are in your packet for review. Any additions from administration? Questions from the board regarding content?
I, I just wanna make a comment and congratulate the middle school VEX. Two middle school teams from Winnicott Robotics Club have qualified for the 2024 VEX Robotics World Championships, and these two teams combined to win the Wisconsin State Championships last month, so now head to Dallas, Texas.
And one high school team, too.
And, and one high school, all right. And to compete, I think it's great to represent the community school district from all over the world on April 28th through April 30th.
All right, anything else? Okay, board reports, any communications?
There are none.
Okay. And a couple things, I will officially accept Earl Peterson's resignation from the board that was presented to us today. So we will, we have a policy to fill his seat, so we will be following the policy to fill that vacancy. And then on April 30th, we are scheduled for a community listening session, and I'm looking for one or two board members to attend that.
You got me.
Okay.
I did go to the last one, but I can represent the board on this one otherwise as well. Okay.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday, okay. So Mr. Kundy and Mr. Ackman, I will have you attend that.
And those are at, what, six o'clock was it, or six-thirty?
Six-thirty, it's gonna be in the high school library, the classroom, or, so, sorry, that one's just in the high school library generally.
Okay. All right, and committee reports, HR and finance.
We have not met since our last meeting, but we were scheduled to meet on May 2nd.
Thank you. And marketing and public, public relations, Mrs. Keller is not here, but I don't believe anything has occurred in that committee.
Correct.
And policy.
We have completed our packets of policy with the revisions and/or new recommended policies. With the policies that we spoke tonight on, administration of medication and emergency care, as well as public comment at board meetings, we will schedule a meeting to review and go over that and bring that back for the, the board meeting, that's probably gonna be sometime in May, depending upon when I can get the language together with, with Peggy and council.
And with the medication one, is that, should we be inviting Jennifer Crawsey, our district nurse? Is that where some of the questions are coming from, or?
It might be a good idea. As well, it might support us with a little bit of process of idea-
Okay.
-for some of this, and I think it might be a good idea to have her at our meeting.
Okay, 'cause she actually assisted with that policy.
Right. And if I can remember, that policy does not come into validation until 2025, 2026-
Next school year.
-school year, so, not that we, we don't wanna let it go, but we have a little bit of time on that policy, as you read, when it comes to validation in a district as a policy as well. Otherwise, I don't have no scheduled meeting until then.
Okay. All right, and I would entertain then a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
Second, motion by Kundy, second by Hanson, to move into executive session under statute nineteen-point-eight-five, to approve executive session minutes from April 7th, 2025, state statute nineteen-point-eight-five-sub-one-sub-C, to consider issuing preliminary notices of non-renewal, per Wisconsin statute one-eighteen-point-two-two-sub-three, and under Wisconsin statute nineteen-point-eight-five-sub-one-sub-C-
Yeah.
-regarding strategies for improving retention within the district. The board will move into open session and may take action on items discussed in closed session. Roll call, please.
Stelzner, Verich.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Kundy, I, Hanson.
Aye.